Call to order the regular meeting of the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Thursday, October 19th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickroll.
Here.
Also present Clerk Soul.
And I have a brief President's Report this evening. First, I wanted to thank residents who have submitted their applications to serve on the Riverside 150 Sesquicentennial Committee. We are still receiving those applications, and anyone interested is encouraged to fill out an application on our website or contact village staff. We anticipate appointments being made sometime in November. If you are not selected to serve on the Riverside 150 Committee, please know that there will be plenty of opportunities for volunteers in the various activities that will be planned for 2025. And that concludes my President's Report. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I have two items I'd like to report on this evening. One, I would like to thank everyone that attended the village's first annual trunk-or-treat event yesterday. We had a great turnout, and everyone enjoyed the lighting of the water tower and costume parade afterward. I was told by the library, because they were diligent about doing the various counts, that we had over 280 kiddos that participated. So that, in addition to parents attending, it was a great event. It was very successful, and we anticipate that Parks and Recreation will continue to be hosting this for many years to come. We want to thank members of the village board, village staff, and several community organizations that took part in the event. There were amazing costumes. We also appreciate that the community voted on the staff-decorated pumpkins, and once the votes are tabulated, we will announce which department won. And each department really wants to know who won. I also would like to congratulate, and it seems appropriate because he's here this evening, village forester Mike Collins. I'm being elected as a municipal director to the Board of the Illinois Arbor Association. Congratulations, Mike. That is all I have this evening.
Yes, and thank you so much to our Parks and Rec staff for their efforts. I attended that event last night, and it was a very good event, lots of people involved in our community. That brings us to resident comments. This is a portion of the agenda where anyone in the audience is welcome to speak to the Board regarding non-agenda items. As we go through the agenda, and we get to particular agenda items, we'll provide an opportunity to speak at that time. But if there's something not on the agenda you'd like to address to the Board, now is the time for that. Does anyone in the audience want to address the Board at this time? Yes?
Hi, my name is Amy. I live at 340 Olmsted, and I helped to run the farmer's market, and I just wanted to come and express my gratitude to the Board for continuing to fund the market. I didn't realize there would be any mention of the budget, but hopefully you'll be funding us next year. But in addition to expressing gratitude for your support, I had also planned, I didn't realize Director Mal Kehoe would be here, but I wanted to really express appreciation to the Parks and Rec Department, because I don't think the community necessarily realizes, though we're an 18-week market, Ron hears from me every single week throughout the year. In fact, he said to me, "I haven't heard from you this week," and I said, "I'll be emailing you tomorrow. I know what I'll be emailing you about." But we work year-round. Parks and Rec works year-round, and despite it seeming formulaic, every single week is different at the market, and something different comes. There's a fire that needs to be put out every single week, and Ron and Megan are always available, and they make it seem so easy, but there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that the public doesn't see, and I'm super lucky to be partnered with them on this. So they're a big reason why it's so successful. So thank you for your support. Thanks for continuing to partner us with Parks and Rec. They're a big reason why it was such a success this season. So we'll be back for year 15 next year. So thank you.
And we look forward to year 15, and Amy, thank you for all you do for the farmer's market. I know you put a lot of time into that, and you working with our staff makes that happen for the community.
The staff makes it easy as those first.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Soul, will you read the consent agenda, please?
Approved voucher list of bills, October 19th, 2023. Approved village Board of Trustees. Regular meeting minutes, October 5th, 2023. Review and file community development, public works, fire and police departments, September monthly reports. Review and file Landscape Advisory Commission minutes, September 12th, 2023, and Preservation Commission minutes, August 10th, 2023. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the Village of Riverside for collection of ambulance fees. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into a master software licensing agreement. Buy-in between Dakra Tech LLC and the Village of Riverside. And a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order to the Cook County Emergency Telephone Systems Board for the purchase of seven radios in an amount not to exceed $61,000.
Does anyone on the Board or in the audience want to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion by trustee Evans, second by trustee Marshazga. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk Soul.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
President Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is department board and commission reports. And I would ask if there are any department board or commission reports this evening. We do have, we do have one item scheduled. If there are any other reports, this is a time for that, but we do have one item scheduled. That's a report from our Landscape Advisory Commission.
My name's Tom Wilkins. I'm a commissioner, just appointed this year, and and the LAC formed, passed two motions, one last month, and I'm here to read that to you. The Landscape Advisory Committee recommends that a total of nine disc golf baskets be located on the east side of the driveway leading into Indian Gardens, with the land at the scout cabin having no permanent installation of sports equipment. And then this month, they had a motion, quote, "The LAC requests to work more closely with the Riverside Parks and Recreation Department prior to any final decision made regarding any new installations in public space."
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkins. We will, first of all, we will forward your comments to the Parks and Rec Board. They are, we've, they are working on the disc golf, so we will forward those recommendations and comments to the Parks and Recreation Board. In terms of additional authority and jurisdiction for our various committees, I would ask village staff to look, to provide a summary of what Parks and Rec's jurisdiction and Landscape Advisory's jurisdiction, and provide that to the trustees, and trustees can review that at their leisure, and if you want to visit that issue, you can let Jessica or I know, and we will take it from there. But thank you, Commissioner Wilkins, and the Landscape Advisory Commission.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from trustees? Before we move on? Nope. Pending business, we have a Berkeley traffic update from Director Buckley. Director Buckley.
Thank you, President Pollock, members of the village board, and village manager Francis. I just wanted to provide a quick, brief update on some of the things that we've done over at Berkeley Road between Harlem and Byrd over the past couple of months. So on June 15th, the village board gave us direction to do several different things over in that area. I'll go through them very quickly. We moved the Do Not Enter signs from Harlem Avenue and Berkeley just west of there by the driveway for the townhomes just before the alley. And below those signs, there were also signs that were put on there that says, "Except for authorized vehicles." That was to accommodate the residents of the townhome to be able to enter through that area so they could get to Byrd, to Long Common, to Harlem, to go northbound on Harlem at the traffic control light. We also installed a right turn sign, right turn only sign at the dispensary's curb cut so that as vehicles exited their parking lot onto Berkeley, they could only make a right turn to go back towards Harlem and not go westbound on Berkeley. We installed a stop sign and crosswalk at Byrd and Berkeley, so a little bit further west of there. President Ballerine, former President Ballerine was very proud of that stop sign. We did a lot of work getting that implemented. Installed signage to alert drivers that the area is under video surveillance, which it currently is with our dispensary there. We are still working on, and it's in next year's budget to install additional cameras in that area for us, for the village, not so much under the dispensary's business, but they would be our cameras. And we are also conducting quarterly traffic counts in that area. So that's what I want to sort of talk about this evening, because we just finished our second quarterly traffic count. The first one was done June 5th through June 11th, which was seven full days of counting vehicles. We had a total of 387 vehicles pass through that area. That averages out to be about 55 per day. And the one number I want to concentrate on, there were only nine cars out of all of those vehicles that traveled between the speeds of 26 miles per hour and 35 miles per hour. Our latest study was done September 28th through October 7th, which was actually 10 full days of a study, so a little bit longer. We averaged, there were about 998 cars that traveled through that area at that time. Averages out to be about 100 cars per day traveling down that street. Again, we had 14 vehicles that traveled between the speeds of 26 and 35 miles per For us, that's not a bad number to have, although the total cars per day has increased. I was thinking about the reasons why. I keep a pretty close eye in this area. One of the reasons I was thinking is because of the kids. School was back in session. Parents are dropping off and picking up kids. That's twice a day that they're driving through there. So that's, you know, additional travel down that street. So we're going to continue with this. We're going to do another study in a couple more months, and I'll report back again with those findings, but we're going to evaluate how our signs are doing since we've moved them, since the dispensary's been opened. Are they truly working? You know, in a lot of this, even though I go out there, some of my staff goes out there and watches, we rely on the residents also to keep an eye and let us know how things are going and what their thoughts are. That's been one of my biggest goals, is to, you know, touch base with residents. I'm meeting with the resident tomorrow morning at 8:00 to talk about a traffic concern. We like doing that. We like going out there and actually seeing what their concerns are and trying to figure out ways to get it fixed. So I think we're doing pretty good over here on Berkeley. I think we can see, and I think the residents have seen, a big difference over there, so we'll continue with it and make sure that we're doing things to accommodate them and make sure that area is safe also at the same time. Questions?
Do you think that the next time we get a report like that, this, we could? I do like your data reports, just, could we have the total number of cars for context? Because, you know, .8%
I have to actually add them up. I know it doesn't come out easy. Maybe we can take our report, and we'll make it into a report that has all those things. It's a little bit easier to read.
I think it gives it more the context, it's like a stronger explanation. Like when you say .8% above the limit, you know, it seems kind of small. For all they know, it could be 10 cars, and when you're saying it's hundreds of cars, that makes, or 55 cars a day or whatever, that's a much bigger number, so it's
Yeah, so that .8 that you saw on there, that's, they're above 25 miles per hour. That's why I concentrate on those 14 vehicles that were counted that were over 26 miles per hour.
I just think it's better, it's better, it's not better messaging, but it explains how much traffic there is and how many people drive within the speed limit, which is a lot, according to your report.
Correct. This is a generated report through our system or the equipment that we utilize. It generates this report for us with our logo and our name on top of it. But I do agree that we can develop a report that actually has the numbers to read a little bit easier.
Before we go to the audience, questions from trustees first, and then we'll have any follow-up discussion, and manager Francis had something.
Yes, thank you. What we'll do is we'll put together a spreadsheet that will incorporate the data that Director Buckley is pulling out of the system. We'll compare and do some other summary tables to make it a little bit easier for the residents to look at at a glance to address your concerns. Trustee Evans.
Other questions before we go to the audience? I have one question. You mentioned the number of vehicles. Is there any way to determine how many of those violated the signs?
We are still looking at that. The only way is to actually go out there and watch, and I was thinking about that actually walking over here tonight, because once we got our camera system put in, we'll be able to do that. We'll just have to review video. But it's kind, if it's labor-intensive, it's kind of difficult. You have to watch through all the video, which is the same issue we have right now. We could ask the dispensary for clips of video to watch it, to see how many do, but then we have to go back to see, are they leaving the condos or are they a resident that pulls into a driveway on Byrd down the block? Because we are allowing residents that live there to pull through there also. So it's, it is a difficult one to try to get that exact number, but we are going to work on it and monitor that also.
Okay. And we're putting in our own camera system there? Is that correct?
In our previous items that were brought up, there was a talk about putting in a flock camera in that area. We are looking to put those cameras in, not exactly sure where yet, but that is one of the locations that we are looking at also.
The other questions from trustees. Trustee Clarity, you're online, so I'll ask if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions, Amy?
Okay. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this? Seeing none, there's no action to be taken, so unless there's further questions or comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, Chief Buckley. I appreciate the report. New business, spongy moth presentation by Forester Collins and Director Taff.
Yeah, I just wanted to do some introductions and kind of preface this. This past summer, the Public Works Department was made aware of the spongy moth being in Scottswood Commons, also previously known as gypsy moth. It is an invasive species. It's responsible for defoliation. But to get any deeper into the weeds, I'll invite Forester Collins up and Scott Shermer with the Illinois Department of Agriculture. They can speak more in depth on the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. And thank you. Good to see you, President Pollock, manager Francis, village trustees. I appreciate the invitation to come speak this evening. Unfortunately, not the best topic that I've ever broached with you guys. It's very unfortunate, you know, spongy moth, as Dan had alluded to, is an invasive. It was brought over from Europe and has been pretty impactful to our hardwoods and conifer forests. It's been moving westward. I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but, you know, it's been a challenge, and it's not the first time we've dealt with it in Riverside. So we will get to that, but I did want to introduce Scott Shermer. He is with the Illinois Department of Agriculture. He manages their northern field office and is what I would consider to be an expert on dealing with spongy moth, gypsy moth. He's had years and years of experience, and he's really been an amazing resource for municipal foresters in the region and myself especially. We collaborated on Emerald Ash Bore, and, you know, I'm sure we'll be collaborating on this. You know, I really appreciate him coming out and giving support to the cause today, especially being away from his family this evening. So really appreciate you coming out. Generally, we're going to give a quick presentation or as fast as we can go, because this is a pretty dynamic situation. At the end of the day, you know, I'm going to set the stage. Scott's going to come in with some expert insights, and then we'll wrap things up with some managerial options for the Board to consider, and then, of course, questions and answers and all sorts of good stuff. So as I mentioned before, try this. Oh, there we go. Perfect. So I was getting a little ahead of myself there. You know, as I mentioned, it was brought over by an amateur entomologist, essentially emphasis on the amateur, in 1869, about the same time Frederick Olmsted was walking the riverbanks of the Des Plaines. Since that time, it's slowly moved westward. It's now in Illinois, Indiana, and some southern states like the Carolinas, Tennessee. Why do we care about spongy moth? Unfortunately, it's a defoliator of trees. You can see the picture to the left there. You know, it's basically caterpillars, spongy moth caterpillars that are feeding on a linden leaf. If the population's high enough, it can completely defoliate a tree. Multiple defoliations can lead to tree mortality, and even a single defoliation if the tree is stressed could tip the balance on its health and cause decline. The picture to the right is actually the female spongy moth, and you can see it laying in egg mass. This was in Scottswood Common, and following this photo, it was no longer living in this world. Either which way, it has a very wide host range, different species that it feeds upon. Unfortunately, oaks are its most favored species, which is why we're finding it in Scottswood, that is prime habitat for this invasive insect. You know, wanted to give a shout-out to Christine Anderson, who lives on Scottswood. She had actually called me in the middle of July, and she said, "Sponge, you know, I see some spongy moths out in Scottswood." Came out and observed a fairly heavy amount of moth activity in Scottswood. You know, we did a preliminary egg mass survey, and you can see in the bottom picture there, I've highlighted in a red square where I've actually identified some egg masses throughout Scottswood Common. I have done some more surveys, like along Blooming Bank and other areas around the river. However, it's really hard to see the insect while the leaves are on the tree, especially the egg masses way high up in the top of the canopy. So there will be more surveys that will follow, and some of what we're talking about tonight is fairly preliminary until we can complete those surveys. So this is not Riverside's first rodeo with, back then it was gypsy moth. When I first got here in 2005, I did find some egg masses in Scottswood Common and Indian Gardens, worked with the Illinois Department of Ag. Your predecessor, Major Jim Kavanaugh, at the time. And we did actually collaborate by doing trapping. Moth counts were high enough to where in 2006, we did actually work with them to spray parts of Brookfield, Lyons, and Riverside, a total of about 600 acres. And basically, what was performed was two aerial applications of what's called BTK. It's basically a soil-borne bacterium, organic that exists in the soil, and if you're a gardener, you've been exposed to it many times over. And then we also did a pheromone flake drop. We will talk more about that in Scott's portion of the talk. So that knocked down the population fairly significantly, and that was in 2006. 2009, I did find two small areas, one in Indian Gardens and another at First Avenue in Ridgewood. We did do spot sprays from the ground for those two because they're pretty minimal. So with that, I'm going to pass you over to Scott, and he's going to do a deep dive on the insects biology and some of the treatments that IDA has been doing and his experience. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Village of Riverside. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And Mike mentioned that I'm away from my family, but actually, I was born and raised in Riverside, so I got to have dinner with my parents, so I'm not necessarily away from my family. But not necessarily a total deep dive, but when you talk about insects and managing insects, you have to look at their life cycle, and you have to look at the vulnerabilities and where you're going to take advantage of that to control them. So this is an annual insect, and if you look in the bottom kind of right-hand corner, well, let me start up at the top. The egg masses that Mike mentioned are what we're going to see the majority of the year. They're inactive. You can't really do anything about them except scrape them off. As you rotate clockwise, bottom right-hand side, you'll see that little larva. As those larvae come out, as they hatch, the little caterpillars, they're basically feeding machines. And that short window between late April through probably mid-June is when all the damage is going to happen. So it's really a tight window there of opportunity to take advantage of that. The product that's used is, they have to ingest it, and so that's where the feeding happens. The rest of the life cycle is basically inactive. The adults fly around, males fly around, females don't. Males find the females, mate, and just make more. So really, that little window of opportunity is what we're going to focus on as far as the management that Mike mentioned earlier. So the reasons to be concerned about spongy moth infestations, I'll basically just read this slide, but this is something off of, or out of Batavia from a couple of years ago. It does spread easily, but it can be controlled when it's detected early and action is taken. It typically spreads through human-assisted movement, so through movement of tree debris, storm debris, firewood, even on campers and outdoor articles. It got its name "gypsy" from the fact that it moved kind of in that way, and then they changed it to spongy moth out of a sensitivity initiative for common names. As Mike mentioned, the caterpillars feed on over 200 types of plants, but they do prefer oaks, so that's why it is a little bit of a challenge, is that we focus on the oaks as the major resource that's at risk, but you do have to kind of look at a bunch of other trees out there to see if you're catching everything, and that can be a challenge. Again, Mike mentioned this too, but I'll reiterate that defoliation, more than two years in a row or multiple defoliations can put that tree into decline or mortality, but a single defoliation event usually is not fatal unless it's coupled with another infestation, drought, some kind of abiotic factor that that tree would normally be able to fend off if it wasn't being defoliated. And that was the next point. I had myself a little bit. And then the known natural controls are effective native predators. Again, this is a non-native invasive species, so nothing co-evolved with it to control it. There are some biocontrols out there that have been introduced and initiated, but being something biological, they're not really dependable, and you require the appropriate conditions for those to work effectively. So again, they're not reliable. So concerns for homeowners, this is probably going to be one of the bigger things that you're going to hear about, or at least from the public. You know, anytime you have something attacking trees or causing damage on trees, it hits people at home, especially in Riverside. I know growing up here, the forest, the urban canopy is why people move here, one of the reasons why they move here, one of the reasons why they like the outdoor space and recreate. So you're talking about potential aesthetic damages, shade reduction, which ultimately results in increased energy usage, noise level increases. You know, you have some busy streets that surround this. If those forested areas were devoid of foliage, you'd just get additional noise coming in. And then, of course, homeowners become liable for the damage that these trees incur as far as health issues, removing the trees, potential limbs falling during storms, weather events, snow and that sort of stuff, store accumulation. Of course, footing the bill for tree removal costs, and then additionally replacing those trees to reforest the area. This is just a pretty extreme example, pretty close to home in Riverside, or not Riverside, excuse me, Rockford. But you look at that, and all those trees in the foreground are completely devoid of foliage, and if you look in the rear, you can see all the green back there. So clearly, it's not that the leaves have fallen off the tree. This was a massive defoliation event, to the point that people were wrapping cellophane around the trunks of the trees in a last-ditch effort to try and prevent the caterpillar from doing damage. So shifting gears a little bit, and I know I'm moving a little quickly, but this is just an example of what we do. So this is our 2023 treatment program from this year. So at the top, you can see the, I think that's four, four treatment blocks for a total of about 3,000 acres, where we did BTK applications under the STS, our slow-spread program. And then below that is a lot larger set of treatment blocks and a lot larger acreage, which is done with the mating disruption by the US Forest Service. So depending upon the nature of the infestation, the nature of the infestation, the acreage is impacted. We do have two different techniques to approach this. When do you use aerial applications? These are a little poignant, I guess, but when you need to offset the potential ecological and financial threats to the area. So, you know, obviously looking at paying money to come in to control something, you're going to look at controlling it because it's going to have a negative impact or an ecological or economic impact on the area and what's looking to be protected. Survey information indicates populations of spongy moth are growing or at high levels. We don't have that survey information here per se, but I will make a point that the fact that we went out, Mike and his staff went out, I went out and took a look today, we do have those life stages present in standing live trees. Is criteria enough for us to go into a treatment or to okay a treatment on our side of things? Aerial applications are a lot more efficient and cost-effective to control it, particularly earlier than later. You do have that larger area of coverage to basically get a buffer in to make sure that you do get everything. And then the options for treatment from the ground are relatively ineffective and cost-prohibitive because you're treating individual trees from the ground, trying to shoot 60, 70 feet up, whereas if you're flying overhead, dropping the product, it will settle in and get full coverage. This is probably the most technical and busy slide, but it's something that's very important and how are we doing on time, Mike? Okay. So, Mike mentioned BTK and this is a naturally occurring soilborne bacteria that's been formulated to be used for spongy moth control. It's, the product itself is organic. Again, it's naturally occurring. It's been used for over 50 years in organic production of fruits and vegetables and also backyard gardening. It's specific to lepidopterin, so it'll only kill caterpillars of butterflies and moths as they eat it. So, it has to be ingested. It's activated in a basic or alkaline environment, which insects have. Mammals, amphibians, birds, reptiles all have acidic, so it just passes through them like a piece of gum. So, it's really a neat formulation, a neat option. And if you look down below, it says the alkaline caterpillar gut triggers the BTK to release the toxin. The toxin kills the cells and basically gives them a stomach ache to the point that they won't feed anymore and they die. And then again, people, mammals, birds, reptiles, all have acidic guts and they can't trigger the toxin to actually be produced, so it passes through. I just threw this one in because I think a lot of people have a little bit of misperception about what applications are and how they're done. I think a lot of people have the sense that someone maybe just goes out with a spray rig and just kind of sprays around or does something like that and doesn't pay much attention. But with these aerial applications, of course, there's a lot of human safety, environmental safety that go into it. And so this is just, this isn't necessarily what would be done for the BTK application, but this is a program that's used for aerial applications called AGNAV. And on the right-hand side, you can see where that treatment block is kind of blocked out. Each pilot will have their treatment block they're working on on a screen, just like in our vehicles, GPS programmed and loaded in as a shape file. And then they basically just go back and forth and paint that area. So, they know when to turn on, when to turn off. They have indicators in the aircraft as well. So, it's very, very, very precise equipment and operations. This is a pretty cool slide. I really like showing these because this is a before and after. So, this can actually demonstrate what a bad infestation may look like and then after the treatment comes in, if all environmental conditions line up, the treatment's done at the right time, the product is spot-on as it usually is. It's probably pretty hard to see, but if, this is actually the Morton Arboretum proper from 2019. So, on the left-hand side, you'll see 2019 catch with the 2020 planned treatment on top of it in that red box. I think there's like a 50, 56, 90, 80, and maybe a 170 catch in there. After the application on the right-hand side, there is a, we came in with a more intensive trapping grid, which we call a post-treatment delimit. And of all those traps in there, which looks to be about 18 or 15 or 18, we had a four and a two. So, we went down from about 600 moths caught in that treatment block, or in that block from the previous year to post-treatment, we caught six. So, when everything's done right and we get it right, it's very, very effective. And, is this where I wanted to give back to you, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. I will pass it back to Mike.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate all that information. So, just in closing, I thought I would discuss some management options based on what we're seeing out there and certainly this is open for discussion and Q and A. You know, the first option would be to essentially do nothing, do some moth trapping with the IDA next year, and then we would also evaluate the levels of defoliation. You know, the negative side of that or the downside would be there are risks associated with that. We could have increased tree mortality. It's not a guarantee either. Really, it depends on how stressed our urban trees are, which I know we've had some drought over the past three to four years. So, you know, it's a bit of a roll of the dice, but one option is that we don't do anything and we just monitor. And to be quite frank, either way, I'm going to be monitored. So, that will happen no matter what. So, another option, if you look, you know, we could take the approach of doing a ground BTK application, very similar to what we did in 2009. As Scott mentioned, it's not as effective and it actually costs more than the aerial application, but this would be mainly to public trees. We would be doing Scotswood and some neighboring Parkway trees. You know, one potential downside is if there are gypsy, or sorry, spongy moth infestations on private property, we would not be addressing those. So, that total price tag, based on a current quote that I have, is approaching $13,000 for two BTK sprays from the ground, Scotswood and Parkway's, probably about half of Scotswood essentially. Well, and I should mention, actually, you can see at the bottom left, that was actually the ground application we did at Indian Gardens in 2009. And one thing I did kind of gloss over a little quickly, in 2006, when we had the 600 acres treated, that was actually federally funded, funneled down to the state of Illinois. So, that was a free treatment and that was because we were in considered a, I think, a quarantine area or out on the leading.
It was in the STS area back at that time. Since then, it's advanced further out west and south. So, you guys are now not included in that area. Unfortunately, you're in what we call the monitoring area now for us or the suppression area for control purposes.
So, unfortunately, the funding wouldn't be there at the state level. And actually, I think that happened in '09 because we had to pay for those ground sprays ourselves. So, anyway, the final option or consideration would be to do the two aerial BTK sprays. I've kind of highlighted in the picture there, you know, a proposed general thought on what a 25-acre application would look like. You know, based on some surveying and what we saw in the field today, I may be more inclined to stretch towards the river and also pick up some of Swan Pond. You know, we really found less egg masses towards the southern portion of Scotswood as opposed to the northern portion. So, this would essentially be, you know, two applications that would take place in early May. First would be when the red buds flower, the other would be two weeks later. Generally, these applications would be done 5:30 in the morning, fairly early. And, you know, it would be an aerial spray that would total about $11,000 for both sprays. You know, and I think the idea, from my perspective, you know, and speaking with Scott, being that we're seeing all life stages out on Scotswood Common, that would be where I would lean towards because I'm, of course, very vested and want to make sure that these trees don't get defoliated. But I certainly understand there are a lot of considerations here. There would be public notification. We would likely discuss this at the landscape advisory and we could certainly return if that's something that's warranted or needed by the board. But with that, I think, you know, we could move on to any questions or concerns you might have.
Thank you, Forester Collins. And Scott, thank you very much for the presentation. It's not good news, but I'm glad you brought this to our attention. Open it up for questions and comments. Trustee Mateo.
So, the native caterpillars co-evolved with BTK. So, what happens to them? Do they get killed off as well?
I think, you know, I can take a stab at this. You tell me if I'm right.
I'm more than happy to jump in.
No, please do.
I get this a lot. So, yeah, so, and I wanted to kind of actually go back. So, the reason that there are two BTK applications is because the product only lasts about five to seven days in the environment before it gets broken down by moisture and sunlight and things like that. So, the applications are made, like Mike said, about five to 10 days apart, depending upon ideal weather conditions. And again, that's when that real tight window of opportunity comes into play with the life stages. The dosing of the product is only effective up until the third instar of the caterpillar. So, if you get, if you lose that window and it gets beyond that window, it's not a strong enough dose to kill something that's that big. We need something that's about that big to be able to kill it through feeding. The positive things about this bug, I guess, are that from a forestry perspective, there aren't many native leps that are hatched in that early April timeframe or that window of opportunity for us. A lot of questions come up about monarchs and other issues. You know, this is a forest pest. We're treating forested areas, not necessarily open lands and areas where monarchs would be preferred habitat or where their preferred habitat would be, although there is some crossover. But generally speaking, I have plenty of research and plenty of documents that indicate that there's minimal impact because of the fact that the habitats don't cross over significantly between monarchs and spongy moth. And then there's actually benefits to native lepidopterin populations because by coming in and even if you do have some collateral damage, you remove the spongy moth as a primary competitor for the natives. The natives have more background noise in the area, so they spill back in a lot quicker and rehabilitate that area with less competition. And then the spongy moth typically, you don't have to do a treatment again for 10 or 15 years afterwards unless there's some kind of artificial reintroduction done. So, there's a lot of work. That's a very common question and a good question and there's a lot of work that's been done on what I would call collateral damage and particularly monarchs.
But there are plenty of other cats that are going to be, especially in oak trees. You're saying that given the timing, they might not hatch out until after the BTX is gone?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. That's probably one of the biggest benefits or I should say, advantages that we have is just strictly the timing of the hatch. These hatch so much earlier than almost all of the natives. And the fact that the product is so short-lived, we have to apply it twice to get that window of opportunity covered over two weeks to get that first through third instar. That's why we monitor hatch so closely. What's really important with this is you need about 40% leaf development to get enough product to stick to the leaves. So, that's where it gets nervous for us. Yes, that if the hatch happens and then it gets cool and the trees slow down, the caterpillars slow down. But if you get any kind of fluctuation, the caterpillars pick up a lot faster than the trees. So, we may run out of, you sometimes do have that nervous Nellie moment where those caterpillars might get a little too big and the leaves aren't quite there, but we do a very, very tight job of watching that. We talk with other states. We know when things hatch in southern Indiana, so we can kind of time things out. There's phenological indicators as well. Brightle reese, brimade is one and the red buds are one that we know that we can time it with. So,
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
Trustee, ask a question?
Yes, thank you. Since we're immediately adjacent to Cook County Forest Preserve property and Zoo Woods and Riverside Lawn, are there any efficiencies that could be achieved by working with the preserves and maybe doing a joint application?
So, I could do some formal outreach there and get back to you on that question. I did speak with staff when I initially found it to give them a heads up that there's spongy moth here. There could be some in your preserves that, you know, are adjacent to us. So, I did reach out to them and what I was told informally, and this is at a lower level, is that generally they would not treat until they saw significant defoliation. So, in terms of partnering, I'm not sure. And of course, like I said, that's an informal conversation at a lower level, but I know that they've had issues up in Park Ridge. They've had some outbreaks there where, I mean, maybe you could speak to that, but I know they had pretty significant defoliation before they were managing those.
Yeah, I don't have full details on that, but they did do some overlap in neighboring, in neighborhoods as well as the forest preserve district up along, oh, like D Road, River Road, I believe, up in that area. But there is that opportunity to partner if the conditions... The thing is, is that the parameters just may be different. Like Mike said, is that your threshold may be, hey, we got them here. We see the egg masses. They're being a forest preserve. They may have a different set of criteria that may be defoliation, observable defoliation.
But that would put us at risk. That doesn't help. I don't like that.
No, and that's, yeah, that's part of the problem too, is what you actually see with this bug is, and I mentioned it to Mike, is that since the females don't fly, they can't distribute that way. You can't have a gravid female fly and lay her eggs somewhere else. So, they're really, when you find these infestations, they're going to be hot and heavy on a handful of trees. That's not to say that the infestation may have come from somewhere else, but you know, we took a quick walk around and we didn't, you know, it seemed to peter out pretty quickly. So, I'm pretty confident that that's kind of the epicenter of it. How it got there, I don't know. But yeah, there is always that risk and the bigger issue is when these little kind of outbreaks start to coalesce. But yeah, there is, I guess that's a really good point too, is I mentioned, usually 10 years to 15 years you won't have to treat again, but you know, if one of your neighbors has it festering somewhere, it could certainly infiltrate Riverside much quicker than that. Yeah. I guess to that end, you know, I talked to our program manager and we're happy to provide traps. I mean, I know that we haven't done the trapping, so we don't know the full extent, but we're basically, you know, basing this off of our visual, which is our criteria to do the treatment. We can certainly, we can certainly provide traps either post-treatment or anytime. There's just a, you are losing that season, that window of opportunity to do the application next April because the traps don't go out until end of July. So, you're kind of taking what you got right now, hoping it doesn't get much worse to basically maybe find out that it has gotten much worse through those traps.
Who does the application?
It's a private contractor. No, no, it's a, it's a, there's a handful of ag services that'll do these applications and most of them are your traditional corn, soybeans, but some of them do specialize in forestry applications as well.
How do they apply it? How do they apply it? Is it with a helicopter?
Yeah, I have, I was showing my dad video earlier. Yeah, so they fly right over the canopy, about 40 to 50 feet. They have booms that go out and then they have what are called micro neares that are basically propellers. So, the product comes through and the propeller spins and basically atomizes the product to come out and get full coverage of the foliage. And it's pretty, it's actually pretty neat because you need the pitching and the yawing of the leaves to get the product to filter all the way down. Otherwise, if there was no wind, it would just kind of shell the outside of the canopy and you wouldn't get anything on the interior. So, as that helicopter comes by at low altitude, the prop wash pushes the leaves down and actually forces the product down to full coverage of the canopy. So, low altitude helicopter applications, yep.
Can we ride along?
Sorry.
Definitely have a watch party.
Maybe, maybe.
I'd rather see them.
Trustee Clarity, did you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
I have a question just on the aerial application. Obviously, we notify people who live in, work in the area. Do they have to stay indoors? I mean, what's the, what's the protocol as far as the human population?
Yep, yep. So, with this product, again, it is organic and there's no REI or reentry interval specified. So, if there is something that is highly toxic or, you know, has potential to harm humans, like you go out and spray a cornfield, there may be an REI of 12 hours or when the product's dry. With this one, there is no concern with that. The minimal concerns that folks have are generally with like a little bit of eye and respiratory irritation because the product is effectively an aerosol. It's a very fine mist that comes out. But we recommend, typically recommend that if folks are concerned about something like that, if maybe they have asthma or some kind of compromised immune system or something like that, just stay indoors until the aircraft are gone. I was telling Mike that 25-acre application's probably going to take 10 or 15 minutes to do. So, they'll be gone before most people are up probably, you know, six, I shouldn't say that, but six o'clock. If they start at 5:30, they'll be done by six.
That's a good point.
And yeah, so most folks won't be out. You may have some dog walkers. You may have some folks out there having coffee on their decks or something. But yeah, if they're concerned about it, the recommendation would be to stay indoors. But otherwise, we've never had a corroborated medical complaint about the product, anybody having to go get medical treatment. having to go get medical treatment for it.
Trustee Evans.
So as far as scheduling, so do you just come up with a window of days and you just watch the, just the environmental, you know, characteristics of the days and try to pick the right day?
It's pretty much that scientific, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we just look at the window of when we'd like to do it, and we watch for rain, we watch for wind. This product, you can't apply over 10 miles an hour, I believe. So you do have to have pretty low wind conditions. And again, that's one of the reasons why the early applications are done, because the air temperatures don't pick up until later in the day, and then you start to get swirls and inversions. That time in the morning, it's usually pretty cool. Sometimes the biggest challenge is fog and visibility, but also it's ideal conditions for applying the product. There's humidity concerns, so usually the humidity is pretty high in the morning. You don't want the product because it comes out so fine. If there's not enough humidity in the air, it loses moisture and doesn't have its staying power. But yeah, truth be told, it's really a matter of like, hey, when do we want to treat? Okay, this week. All right, we'll start to narrow it down as the time comes.
Anything else from trustees? Anyone in the audience have any comments on this subject? Seeing none. Manager Francis.
If the board does decide that this is something they want staff to do, we would have to add this dollar amount within the budget. I know that Forester Collins estimated it to be around $11,000. If we were going to go forward with it, I would put in a buffer and put it probably at $15,000 in the capital budget, just in case he finds additional spaces that need to be treated to allow for that flexibility so that we don't have to come back to the board, so that we can manage it from a staff perspective.
Are you looking for direction tonight?
Yes.
Trustees.
I would be in agreement with that. I would also like another inquiry to be made to the Cook County Forest Preserves to see if there's an opportunity to partner and achieve some efficiency there.
In agreement with the aerial application?
Yes, the aerial, yeah.
Absolutely. I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Clarity.
Have a favor. For the aerial application, I would ask that staff be mindful that we should do some significant resident education on this. I think we have the benefit of the expert in the long presentation. I think people will need a little bit of time to get this idea and understand it, and it's an opportunity to ask questions, so please budget in that staff time and resources for that education campaign.
Thank you.
Can we make that PDF, that PowerPoint available?
Yeah. I'm told it's really large, so we may have to compress it and do a couple of things, but yes, we will get it out there. And we will also, Riverside TV, I made a request that they clip this information so that there's a video that we can post because it's great information that was provided this evening as an education campaign as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I told Mike that we have all kinds of FAQs and resources because we do, I mean, when we're doing our treatments, it's multi-county, multi-jurisdiction municipalities, so we do a lot of education outreach on the front end to try and avoid concerns and issues and, dare I say, pushback any way that we can. So trying to get out in front of the education and outreach side of it is huge and something that we're quite involved with and happy to help with, so we're here to help.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, announcement of public hearing of 2023 tax levy ordinance to be held on November 2, 2023. Director Johns.
Good evening. The state of Illinois Truth in Taxation Law requires that the village hold a truth in taxation hearing if the aggregate levy is in excess of 105% from the prior year's levy. With the CPI what it is this year, we are recommending of more than a 5% levy increase, so we will hold a truth in taxation hearing on November 2. Notice of this will be placed in next Wednesday's landmark.
Thank you, Director Johns. Any questions, comments? Nothing from the public? Move on to the next item on the agenda, a resolution determining the estimated value of Village of Riverside real estate tax levy for year 2023. Director Johns.
The truth in taxation law also requires that not less than 20 days prior to adoption that the board announce an estimate of the next year's levy. The 2023 tax levy estimate for the village totals $6,652,571. Of this levy amount, $5,888,626 is for capped funds, $125,000 is for the non-capped purpose of special recreation, and $638,946 is for non-capped debt service. This is an estimated extension of an 8.68 increase over the prior year levy that the Cook County will decrease based on final EAV numbers. For the Riverside Public Library, the 2023 tax levy estimate is in the amount of $1,438,45 and of this total levy amount, $1,255,376 represents general purpose and $119,900 represents the debt service levy. This total levy increase is estimated at 3.10% greater than the previous year's levy. The library board discussed this request at their October 10 meeting. This will also be presented at the public hearing next meeting, and final adoption is scheduled for December 7.
Thank you, Director Johns. Any questions for Finance Director? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience with any comments on this matter? Seeing none. We do need a motion to approve the resolution determining the estimated Village of Riverside real estate tax levy for year 2023.
I'll move to accept the resolution.
Motion made by Trustee Mateo. Second by Trustee Marshazga. Director Johns, did you have additional?
Yes, I did just want to mention that Attorney Pickrell did notice a minor Scrivener's error in the resolution in your packet, so there is a clean version at your table tonight. There was a misprint of one date.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions on the motion? If not, Clerk Sol, please read the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
President Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Next on the agenda, trustee reports and cross-community climate collaborative C4 updates. Any trustee reports or any C4 updates?
We are having a meeting next Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Riverside Public Library. We are very, very close to presenting a list of recommendations for the board's consideration at the November 2 meeting. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any other trustee reports? We do have need for an executive session to discuss probable imminent or pending litigation and to discuss the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in the Open Meetings Act, including a vacancy in a public office when the public body has given power to appoint under law or ordinance, or the disciplined performance or removal of the occupant of a public office when the public body has given power to remove the occupant under law or ordinance. So we will have executive session for those items. We will, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. We will not reconvene this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Evans, second, Trustee Marshazga. Roll call, Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
President Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Meeting is adjourned.